I'd like to welcome everybody. It's nine o'clock. We will open the meeting with a moment of silent meditation, followed by a pledge of allegiance, and approval of the minutes from our January 8th, 2020 special meeting and January 9th, 2020 meeting.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody. We have a nine o'clock appointment with Laura B. Metta, Executive Director of the Upper County Convention and Visitor Bureau, presentation of quarterly report, October through December 2019. At 9:30, we have an appointment to consider request for a hearing filed by Diane L. Riffle, case number 61319-02, Banks Tax District, tax map 3P, partial number 20.1. At 10:00 a.m., we have a public hearing, seventh meeting, and adoption of suggested revision to the Upper County Flood Plane Ordinance, previously adopted on September 16th, 2010. At 10:15, we have a conference of PSD Phase Free Water System Improvement Project, notice of intent to bid CDVG Small City Project. At 10:45, we have a meeting with Attorney Mark Calantonio of Fitzsimmons Law Firm, LLC, updating on open litigation via conference call. Item may lead to execution per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4. At 1:00 p.m., we have supervisory board meetings, at 2:00 policy board meetings, and at 3:00 quarterly advisory board meetings. Item for discussion, action, or approval. Item one, approval of fiduciary commissioner's recommendation for removal of Michael Dean as administrator for the estate of Patricia Beth Dean, deceased.
Before we get going, I received notice from Daya Lex, who was about 6:00, that she's withdrawing the petition to re-named. So I'm considered withdrawn.
Okay. Item two, approval and signature of the Westmont Tyewish Resource Convention and Development Project Agreement for the James W. Curry Public Library Garden Project. This project was selected to receive funding in the amount of $1,000 for fiscal year 20 and must be completed by June 15th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
Subtle.
A second.
I forgot to get the minutes approved. Let's go back and approve them. You all have a sense of rules.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Been moved and seconded on favor of Sugar Five saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have. Thanks you. Item three, discuss public employees insurance. I'm gonna skip this first because it's almost 5 after 9. Go ahead, take your point.
Motion to approve.
On number two, oh, yeah.
Yeah, motion's that.
On favor of Sugar Five saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have. Now we go back to the point. Laura B. Metta is Executive Director of the Upper County Convention and Visitor Bureau, presentation of quarterly report. Welcome up.
Hi, guys.
Good work.
I have to go work on the media people, but let me get them. Just, um, so, yeah, we're here for our quarterly report that covers October through December 2019, just to give an update of what we've done this past year, or past quarter, and then what we're gonna be planning for this upcoming year. So you've got an actual quarterly report, you've got copies of our new Audra State rack cards that we just had produced and printed and received probably just a couple weeks ago, and then a couple magazines of where our print ads ran in that season, so look through it and I'll kind of run through some of the highlights of things. I'm not gonna read it to you. I always like to just clarify and stress what we do, and our whole mission is to promote Buckhannon and Upsher County to a group of people that live outside of our area, so that way they can learn what we already know, that Buckhannon and Upsher County is a really great place to visit, to live, to stop throwin' their way up to skiing, anywhere we can to get people to have some exposure to our area. That's our main goal, and it's always outside of our local area besides. We are always open to working with a lot of different groups. If anybody reaches out to us, we'll find a way to support them, so I just highlighted some of the things that we did this past quarter. The West Virginia Community Development Hub, I don't know if you saw much of their publications, but they hosted a conference here in Buckhannon at the Opera House in October, really proud of, and I think pushing 200 people, and just to have that many people on Main Street was really pretty cool. But the other fact of what was so great about it, they really are such a great supporter of downtown Buckhannon, and they're kind of using us as their poster child, and they're telling the entire state really all of our successes, and it's really amazing to hear, you know, what this whole community has accomplished over the past 10 years, has received recognition, and were able to help some other up-and-coming towns. So, yeah, that was really great, the Community Development Hub. We kind of coordinated with them, supported them whenever they needed us, they were kind of getting the planning worked out. So again, we're always open to working with people. This past quarter, we also learned, I don't know if you remember, but the 150th Birthday Celebration of West Virginia was a really big hoopla, and there was a really great Civil War Trails map that was produced, and it was huge. It covered all of the historic sites of the Civil War in West Virginia, as well as surrounding states. Well, the surrounding states have continued to produce that and continue to promote it, but somehow it kind of just stopped in West Virginia. But they are working diligently to get that back up and running and to have these maps reproduced. So even though the 150th big celebration is over, people still have a really huge interest in that, and that's one of our biggest tours that we see coming through our office, people who are just looking for heritage and history, and they just want to travel to those sites. So that's coming up, and we're supporting that project, we're providing all of our information. There's already four, I think they even five sites designated in Upsher County, which are still included in that map process, we're just kind of revamping and getting back out there. I also hosted a networking session with Wesleyan, we've done a lot of holiday activities, we do a Christmas scavenger hunt each year, and I think this was our sixth or seventh year doing that. It's always fun for the kids, it's something free that they can go out and just visit local businesses and get a chance to win a few prizes. We had that wrapped up in December. We partner with the Upsher Arts Alliance for a tree and wreath auction, they use our front room every year. They did something different, they usually do an auction, this year they did a straight sale. It's always fun and festive to have our office decorated for free, and we don't have to do all the work, and then we're also, of course, getting people into our doors and just being able to visit with them. As far as our quarterly reach and impact, I've included a little graph, and again, I'm not gonna go over the numbers, but you can see, we really rely a lot on social media, whether we are paying for those social media posts and ads that are running out there, or even just the free ones, they have a huge impact, and it really lets us engage with people. So social media has a huge benefit to us. We always promote people to click over to our website where they can see a whole bunch of other stuff that's going on, so our website's a huge marketing aspect that we focus our time and attention on. We always run online ads, print ads, and then we have our e-newsletter, so you can kind of get an idea of what our reach and impact was throughout this past quarter. Moving over to the event center, you can see our total quarterly revenue was just a little over $17,000, which I think was one of our biggest quarters ever, and it was crazy busy. Shawn had so many back-to-back events flipped, he would flip a room from Friday night for an event on Saturday, and around the point of, is it really worth it to have everybody bust their butts basically overnight until 2:00 a.m. to prep for a Saturday event? But it's amazing to see that we can do it and that there's a need for it. Year-to-date, from July to the end of December, we posted a total of 37 events, and January's usually pretty slow, February starts picking up, and as soon as we hit March for the rest of the year, it's pretty busy. So I think, again, we're gonna see another year where we've exceeded our goal that we set at the beginning of the year, so it's moving right along for sure. We did host the Shriners in October, their event was really successful, we were super happy to welcome them back to Upsher County, and they were satisfied with how everything went, so they're gonna come back with us in April and host another elimination dinner, so that was a huge one for us. We're happy to have them back for sure. Just December, with holiday parties and people who are trying to get the last-minute meetings in, was so busy, we were turning people away and just, we were getting calls constantly. So we were able to refer out to all of the other event venues that we have in the area. We also continued our community grant program for the event center, so if there's a nonprofit organization that wants to host a banquet, a meeting, or any kind of fundraiser, they can reach out to Shawn in our office, and they can receive, I think it's anywhere from 30 to 40 percent off of their rental bill to be able to host their event with us, and it's just another way to get people in there and make sure that the space is utilized. So that's just a really brief overview of what we've done. It's pretty much the same thing, we're always out there, we're always trying to promote, we're trying to let people know all the great stuff that we're doing and what we have in this area, but I wanted to announce some of the things that we have planned for this upcoming year. One, it's not really a huge new thing, but it's a little bit new for us, because again, we go to different events if we're asked to, it's never been a coordinated effort, but this year, we are going to make an effort to have a visitor center booth at local festivals and local fairs. So I reached out to the Maple Star Festival to see if we could have a booth up there. We'll be at Festival Friday, so if there's any kind of local event where our presence would be a benefit, then we're gonna try to make it there. And I started thinking, we can't just have a booth with our brochures on it, because it's really boring. So, we've got fun stuff, and I brought, okay, I just got them last week, but we got viewfinders that highlight some of the attractions when she comes, and we would like y'all, it would be really good photo, too. But each, um, each viewfinder has a different topic, one's restaurants, one covers our local festivals and fairs, one's outdoor recreation, and then I believe the other one's just ones that interest us.
Somebody needs to sign up our Christmas photo for next year.
There you go.
My calendar says Sam's Pizza.
How's that get in there? I got these last week, and you know, we've been to conferences, and this isn't my idea by any means, I've been to conferences and people talked about how just simple this is and how much people like them, so I finally thought, I'm gonna just go ahead and pull the trigger and get them. They were super, super cheap, they're fun. I attended yesterday Tourism Day in Charleston, we took these down to our booth, and everybody just had to come, even if they clicked through like one or two times, and then they talked about, you know, whenever I was a kid, um, yeah, everybody loved it. And I also had another CDB say, he spent $5,000 for virtual reality goggles, and I was like, I spent $150 for this, and he was really jealous. But yeah, I wanted to share our fun stuff. So the viewfinders will go with us to our, along with our booth. We're also working with the Sign Guy to produce Buckhannon stickers that we can give away, and Sign Guy's just incredibly generous, they're a great community partner, so they're working with us really well. And then we'll take our brochures, too, and it's gonna be extremely interesting. I'll leave these up there, if y'all just stick them back in the bag. Aren't they fun?
I'm serious, mine only, mine would only turn up Sam's Pizza.
Oh, that's nice.
I think Sam would jingle around.
So I'm excited to go out, it's always fun just to talk to people, you know, it's just a fun day.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That was great.
Yeah.
Since cameras here, without mentioning mine, it would only turn up Sam's Pizza.
Thank you.
I love these rack cards, these are nice.
Yeah, so, um, the state used to have individual rack cards for each state park, and they are kind of moving away from that, and they're trying to do just a singular piece that covers all state parks, which I get, but we constantly have people asking for something specific about Audra, and I got tired of waiting for the state, so we just made a run. But we coordinated.
Good idea.
Yeah, yeah. But we coordinated with Audra State Park Superintendent, who's actually on our board, so we coordinated them together. We had a total of 15,000 printed, so it should last us.
I don't know how it'd work out, but Buckhannon Auto Mall sponsored kiosks, of course, for canoeers, and they're on all the access.
Yes.
And there's room on that for, uh, for the rack card, for rack cards.
Oh, that'd be good to add that.
See if that can live on.
Yeah, definitely. Well, we're working with that project, too. The kiosks are up, and they're kind of informing the voters of, you know, where the trails are and, you know, all the different information, but after last commission meeting, I was here, actually, Kristy stopped me, and we're gonna work with them to create a rack card for voting, just to kind of, you know, promote that and get people out on the waterways a little bit more. Which brings me actually to one of our next announcements for this upcoming year, is we used to do an advertising grant program for local tourism businesses, and whenever our budget adjusted with running the event center, that was something that we had to cut away. But we've been fortunate, because we've been really conservative with how we spend our money, we do have money set aside in our savings account for special projects. So we talked to the board, and we are going to set aside $10,000 that's in our, in our savings account to do the advertising grant program again for 2020. So local tourism-related businesses can receive up to $1,000 to advertise and promote their business, whether it's producing a rack card, if it's doing a social media campaign, if it's running an online app, if it's, you know, improving their website or creating a website, we can work within that budget. There's a lot of different opportunity, but we just wanted to support our tourism businesses, and sometimes that's really a struggle for people to kind of find the funds to do that, so this is just a veteran's tip for it. So, yeah, we're gonna start promoting that a little bit more heavily, just letting people know that that program's now officially launched, but I wanted to announce it here and then take a state council first.
The James W. Curry Library and Park has submitted an application for the rack card, and then we sent the application to these campaigns, that they'll want to do a rack card, produce their brochure that they recently made with those ones.
Yeah, and they already have great information to pass along so much, and, you know, that's a, that's such a nice facility in Southern Upsher, and I mean, they have those programs throughout the summer, it's just, it's a huge benefit, so, yeah, we'll definitely be able to move forward with that, though. And the only other thing that I'll say that we want to put out there is, you know, the arts is continually thriving in Buckhannon, and we definitely want to be supportive of that initiative, so in this year, we're going to, we're just in the beginning, planning stages, but I wanna make sure that we make this happen in 2020, but we want to have an interactive mural added to the art scene of downtown Buckhannon, so if you see other towns have kind of the angel ways, we're encouraging people to stand in front of them and get their photo taken, and they post it on social media, we just wanna have something like that in Buckhannon, so we're gonna work with securing a location and an artist to do some kind of interactive mural. So it's gonna be fun. Like I said, everything we do is just fun stuff. Do y'all have any questions, Laura?
I think you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
I would like to say this, in your five years I've been on the commission, every
year it seems like it's better and better, your reports, and the progress with the event center.
Yeah.
Amazing.
The event center just pours my life every time. Every single time we kind of deal with it, it just, yeah, it's amazing.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Our next meeting, 9:30, we will move on to the discussion, public employees insurance agency, PEIA plan options presented during the special meeting conducted on January 8th, 2020, consideration that transferred to PEIA effective July 1, 2020.
Pete Babson will be here at your meetings at 1:00, 2:00 today, so if you have any additional questions for him, or if you wanna have any further discussion, you can table this discussion until that time if you'd like, whatever you'd like to do.
What's your other question? I'm pretty happy, I'm happy to be covered with almost everything that we have to, as far as, you know, it has to do with the health insurance aspect of care, how are you feeling on that?
I mean, we still have some things that have to be, lots of votes worked out, I mean, but, you know, I think basically just deciding to transition back to PEIA gives us the option to work those, I mean, yeah, I think just, once we know for sure you're switching, then it becomes, let's, now we have to get all this stuff worked out, I mean, that becomes the thing.
As you know, in the special meeting, the most important thing that you still have to address is the retirement subsidies for those that are unsubsidized through PEIA retirement. So if you were to vote to move forward, then we could start that serious discussion and find out, you know, what you're gonna be able to afford and what's gonna be affordable for the employees as well.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, been moved and seconded, and we approve, on favor of Sugar Five saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have.
The other item related to this, I'm gonna need you to start considering, and this will be on a future agenda, is when exactly you would like to switch your broker record. So of course, the recommendation to transition from PEIA, or to PEIA and to really promote Plan C is from Pete Babston. So I would assume you'll be transitioning your broker record from your current Joe Stanton with Lorneburg Insurance to Pete Babston with USI, but what we really need to know was when you would like to do that, if you would like to do it on July 1, or if you want to do it a little sooner than that, to get time to let Pete have access to our ESO account so you can have a smooth transition towards July 1 to PEIA. Again, I'm not asking for a decision on that today, we'll have it on a future agenda, but something that's certainly concerning.
Is that something that we could have both be part of that, I mean, just to kind of keep Joe around until the end of the year, but also allow Pete to have access at the same time?
I believe so, that's a question I would like to talk to Pete about this afternoon when he's here.
Just to be, maybe whenever he feels comfortable, if he feels Joe should hang around until the end of our contract with ESO.
Originally, I thought that we wouldn't put Pete on until July 1, but the only thing at this point is, I mean, I think he's been to Upsher County, what, 10 times maybe, and of course, he's not getting compensated for any of the meetings that he's coming to currently, so I didn't know if you would want to reconsider that, and then also, I think there's a little bit more security in having a person that's sneaking you from July 1 forward to make sure you're buttoning everything up with your current plan before making that transition, because of course, and this is no fault of anyone's, but when you're leaving a broker, I just wanna make sure we're taking care of everything for your coverage in the next fiscal year as far as loss goes for your insurance that you currently have.
We'll be dealing with ESO for a while after July 1.
Yes, a year.
Okay, move forward, we have correspondence from Senator Elle Collins requesting appointment to the James W. Curry Advisory Board upon approval, first round, will begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2021. Would I have to approve?
I do wanna let you on this, Sarah is heavily involved in the library, she has a child that attends majority of the events. Kristy, you've met her, she was at the light shows that you've been to, she's the one that leads the music and the different kids' activities during those fundraising events, she's on our fundraising committee, she's been a great member of the community, and I think she'd be a great addition to the library board as well, and would represent that group of parents that have children that attend her friends at the library, which we currently don't have represented on our board.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve, on favor of Sugar Five saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have. Five, we have correspondence from Hunter Fletcher, Deputy Sheriff announcing his resignation effective January 2020. Item may lead to execution per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4. You want to give any executive instructions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Been moved and seconded, you received Hunter's resignation, on favor of Sugar Five saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have. Item six, approval and advertisement for Upsher County Civil Service Test of Deputy Sheriffs. This test will be part of the criteria used to establish an eligibility list for appointment to entry-level positions as deputy sheriff. Applications will be accepted until the close of business on February 10th, 2020. No motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second to approve. Been moved and seconded to approve, on favor of Sugar Five saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have. Prove your information, certain items may require discussion, accident or approval by the commission. Item one, correspondence from Laura Altice, Deputy State Auditor for Local Government Services, announcing the upcoming regional budget preparation workshop. Is this in Flatwoods, Virginia, this year?
Uh, Bridgeport, it's on February 26th, from 9 until 11:30. I assume you all would like me to register.
Please. Item two, correspondence from Brad Ayers, Senior Director of Government Affairs for Suden Lake by Altice USA, notifying the commission that effective February 1, 2020, there will be changes to certain video rates and search orders. Item three, Upsher County Fire Board Incorporated, fourth quarter financial reports fiscal year 19. Item four, Lewis captured animal control facility adoption, financial transactions, December 20th, 2019. Item five, Lewis captured animal control facility cap report for the month of December 2019. Six, Lewis captured animal control facility animal report for the month of December 2019. Seven, Upsher County Animal Control, Flashman Officer, monthly animal report for the month of December 2019. Coverage notices, item eight. Item nine, appointments needed or upcoming, Buckhannon Upsher Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Board of Education, appointee 630, 2020. If anybody's interested in that, they can contact you right there.
Organization, this is all.
Yeah, anybody's interested, just contact the Board of Education and let them know. Item 10, Board of Review and Equalization Need Meeting Schedule. Table items, we have nine, next regular meeting of the Upsher County Commission, January 23rd, 2020, item eight, Upsher County Ford House, Texas. And it's 9:30, we have a hearing, considering request for a hearing filed by Diane L. Riffle, case number 61319-02, Banks District, Banks Tax District, tax map 3P, partial 20-1.
Your state's construction ordinance provides a process for a complaint being filed, and this individual had a complaint filed against them, they receive a certified letter notifying them of the complaint, and they're given 20 days to request a hearing with you, so this is their request for a hearing. We do have a draft order granting their request for the hearing and setting it here. We do have a draft order granting the request for the hearing and setting a carry date of January thirtieth, twenty twenty, at nine fifteen.
January thirtieth?
On Thursday.
What time is it here?
Nine fifteen. And that would be during her commission meeting.
Our next meeting is not until ten a.m. Until then, I guess we'll pay some bills.
We need approval of.
Make a motion to approve that hearing date.
Oh, okay.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the hearing date. All favor Sugarfries saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And I have a statement. It's ten fifteen. We have a meeting with the Alcatrop PSD Phase Three Water System Improvement Project. Notice of consent to bid CCBG Small Cities Project. Do you have anything you want to offer?
Well, I know that Tabitha had indicated, why was there not an exact date on the, for the authorization and the, or for the advertisement? That's because it's kind of cart and horse, which one comes first? I have to have that paper to go to the development office. However, we have to have their approval before we can advertise. So I didn't want to put a date in there because I didn't know exactly when they were going to give us the authorization. So I just kind of generalized and let them know that this would be coming to them from you all. And as they're reviewing documents, then they can provide us, once they, yeah, an authorization, then we can select the exact date and I'll let Tabitha know that once those advertising dates are in stone, then I'll make sure that you all have that information.
For your record.
Is it a pretty big project or?
It's a six point five million dollar project, yes.
And where's it headed? What's the?
Several different roads. They know the roads' names better than myself.
Hi, I'm Carrie Wyder, Alcatrop Public Service District. The project consists of four different areas, or four different contracts, actually, I should say, to get to the six point five. Contract one, we are getting a new office building, which is desperately needed. If you'd ever drive behind our current office building, you'll see that we're slipping over the hill. Every time it rains or snows or freezes and thaws, we're scared that we're just going to go tumbling. So at any rate, we're very hopeful that that will be coming soon. Contract two is refurbishing two water tanks that have been in existence since about nineteen eighty, so they're forty years old. It is also part of our contingency from the Bureau of Public Health to either refurbish or replace. And as we know, it's cheaper to refurbish at this point than it is to replace. Contract three, which is actually water line extension project. It is the winery road off of Keesley Mill. It's also a right-of-all ridge in Handy Camp Road, Upper Sand Run Road, which is off Keesley Mill. And then Upper Sand Run, we will cross under Route thirty-three and pick up Wolf Ridge Road. And Contract three also has skate up system and for communications. Contract four is on the one fifty-one side of thirty-three. It includes the areas of Elmore, which is Burt Bridge Road and Osborne Run Road, used to also be called Keydrum. There's been a lot of confusion since we've had the name changes with the nine one one mapping.
That's why I thought it best heard.
So it also includes Hawkins, Hawkins Road, Beach Run Road. And we also have five existing pump stations that will be getting emergency generators in this project. And it also does a connection on the Heaven Grove Road, replacing some valves that are near Union Elementary School that we have a tremendous amount of problems with and bus traffic creates more problems for them. So we're going to be moving them out of the road to along the side of the road. Those valves was put in when the construction of the school was put in and they were never, we've never had the opportunity to update, so we, we've got to do something. It also has a small connection on the King School Road that'll loop it back into one fifty-one at the beginning. We're joining to an old project and a younger project also.
Thank you.
Makes the loop lines. One of the big things, too, it's going to bring, it's going to loop Elmore to where the Elmore Fire Department will have much better water pressure to be able to serve the station where they can fill up right there at the station and not have to go to one of our better fire hydrants. They'll be actually be able to do some things right there at the, the fire department that they currently can't do. So it's a long awaited project for multiple reasons. Multiple reasons.
All these projects are several years out, I mean, like you're looking.
Yeah, I mean, it has been.
It has been.
We're now coming, yeah, to the point that we're just, we're on this there. I mean, I, I would hope that construction will be starting by fall. I mean, even if we go to bid, you know, sometime next month or March, it's got an eighty-day bid hold, so that's still going to throw it close to the fall before we're really getting started. That's, that's even if the bids come in to where we're hoping that they come in. We will be picking up seventy-six customers out of that. So the six point five million or the road construction, the state recognizes about eight thousand dollars per household. I don't think that's changed much for construction. And most of ours are running close twenty thousand dollars per household. So that's what's driving the cost of the project. I mean, as we know, as you get in the further into country, further apart the houses are. So we also had forty-five right-of-ways to secure and we purchased three pieces of property. So it's been a lot of work for us this past year. I mean, forty-five right-of-ways is a lot of dealing with people, staffing, paperwork back and forth. So I know it seems like it's been kind of stagnant, we haven't heard a lot of updates from us, but there's been a lot of work going on behind the scenes. And it was, as it always is, I know lots of work goes on here behind the scenes that the general public does not know, but that's the same what it is, it is for us, too. So.
We got a lot of money out there.
Put in Tom, who's governor, we went, you, Shane, J.C., and Riley Dunn to Charles and pick up.
They, they had received what they call like the small cities, the development office portion of a design funds. And that was to help get the project initially designed so that when we were going through the rest of this project, process of collecting right-of-ways, et cetera, that when we get to that point, we're ready to, you know, advertise and go out to bid. So, yeah, that, those.
This is all part of that.
That is all part of that, yes.
You've been at it, you've been at it for a while, haven't you?
This is actually a project that we've had on our books since two thousand and five. We, we were in the middle of a project when we started this project. But because we need Small Cities Block Grant, Adrian was in line for the Small Cities Block Grant before we filed this. And that, we had to wait until it was paid out through Adrian before we could even qualify. So, well, we got, I think we got that in, was it sixteen? And then we got another, I think it's sixteen and eighteen.
Partial and then the remainder.
Mine is seventeen and eighteen, but, I mean, it's a long time. It's a process, you guys know that. But the general public doesn't understand. And I know, I have many neighbors, I mean, I have neighbors within a month of me that need water desperately, but, and they're going to get it out of this project. I'm glad to be able to say that, but they don't understand why it takes so long. It's a process, it's a big process. But thank you guys.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and second, all favor Sugarfries saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And I have a statement. Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
What's the reasoning that you had to wait for Adrian to come through? What, why did they do that?
With the development office, if the sponsor is sponsoring a current project.
Which Uptown County.
Uptown County sponsored Adrian PSD because it has to be, the Small Cities Block Grant Program has to go through a government entity, so it cannot go through the PSD. So it has, that's why you all sponsored the Adrian PSD project. But you can only have one project open through the county at a time for the development office. So therefore, they had to wait until that project was basically completed or, you know, done before they could request you all to be a sponsor for their project, which, once it was completed, they did that or we did that. And then you, you did sponsor them, but then just going through the bureaucratic steps of.
Like, we had to do income surveys of all the roads, but still only three roads qualified for Small Cities Block Grant. So there's going to be a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes after we actually even get into the, the construction part, where the contractors are going to have to keep track of what road they're working on and what, so Carrie can divvy it out to make sure that Small Cities Block Grant is only paying for certain things, so one certain road.
Because even though this is a six point five million dollar project, the Small Cities portion of it is only one point five million, and that's a grant. The remainder of it is loan. But they had been diligently waiting their turn to be able to get that grant so that then the total cost of the project wasn't all falling on the customers. So, but it's just a process that you have to go through, you know, you have to wait your turn if you have already sponsored a project. And typically, the commission, once they've sponsored one project, they go, they kind of stay with it into, or at least in years past, that they stay with it until that project is.
Completed.
Completed, yes. And then you go on to the next entity that's being requested for sponsorship.
What's your plan as far as once the bids are taken, how long?
Well, once the bids are open, they're like Carrie designated or stated, there's a ninety days. And during that time period, hopefully, everything is under the cost estimate. But we'll have to go through a loan closing for the remainder of the funds. And if we need additional funds, find the avenues to get additional funds to cover that overage. Hopefully, we're under and we're just requesting to be using that under run on additional things that they need for the project. But, but basically, there's a ninety day period. At that point, if everything is kosher, we have the closing, contractor would be issued a notice of award. And then, you know, the standard procedure would be, you know, a time period, they would give their notice to proceed, they'd be doing cementals and, you know, ordering materials and then getting out on the job site.
Do you have an estimated timeframe for the project itself?
Uh, what would completion?
Uh, it's two hundred and seventy days from the award date. So, I mean, it would be sometime twenty twenty one, but it's probably going to be late twenty twenty one. I mean, just look, well, mid, mid twenty twenty one. Because I'm sure it's going to be.
They may have a winter shutdown in that time period, potentially.
That seems actually pretty quick.
But actually, you got materials, and right now, materials is slow.
Yeah, but basically, the four contracts, they'll be running simultaneously and the longest contract length is two hundred and seventy days from.
Yeah, actually, the office buildings on the other end are naming.
Right.
Um, so, but the other three contracts, I'm pretty sure the tanks are even two seventy, but the tanks will be very weather contingent. They won't be able to do that in winter because it's, they're going to have to be completely stripped. They have to be encompassed with plastic and sealed because, because they are tanks from in the eighties, seventy-eight, seventy-nine eighty. They have to be asbestos concealed and stripped down. And they actually have to put a temporary tank in place beside our tank so we can keep water flowing because of the debris that will be, actually, they'll be cleaning the whole inside of our tanks. We've had, you know, a complete diving team inspection done to know what needs to be done prior to putting it out to bid. So, I mean, there's a lot of steps to refurbishing a tank, but.
But all of those contracts will be running simultaneously.
Yeah, they'll all be together.
Thank you, thanks for educating me all night.
Appreciate it.
Our means are the first two, so feel free to, of every month at five thirty, feel free to stop in. If you want an update, call our office. Our office gals will be happy to update you or if you want something from us to come in, we'll, you know, we can try to do that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.